And you're on.
To call this meeting to order, we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true and public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, can you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni, absent. Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
Here.
Mrs. Scott, here. Mr. Sherrill, absent. And Mrs. Thompson.
Okay. All right.
Jordan, I missed it. Is General, is that?
No. No. Yeah. So, okay. So, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I've three items to share with the board this evening. Just had the opportunity on Thursday and Friday, the 15th and 16th of September, to attend a AASA certification alumni consortium where I had the opportunity to learn and network with superintendents across the United States. Took place down in Alexandria, Virginia, just outside of DC area. Our focus conversation was centered around the topic of innovative practices in education. So, it was a very worthwhile experience and a good opportunity to network with those folks. Last Monday, spent time at the in-service visiting district buildings to observe the continual learning taking place with our talented, dedicated district professional staff. And within the next week and a half, our Office of Community Relations will be releasing dates and times and locations of our four 22, 23 school year community engagement sessions that we'll be hosting at each one of our buildings in lieu of our previous two years of Equity Round Tables. And we'll include expanded topics. So, we'll be releasing that in the next week and a half. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so procedures for public participation. Prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board president, if you have one, prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items can be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Having said that, do we have any presentations by the public on agenda items?
So, Mrs. Albrecht, I just wanted to note that...
I'm going to circle back.
Okay.
Yep. Anything as the agenda stands? Hearing none. I do have some announcements. We have some agenda edits that the board will need to vote to add to the agenda. There's a list of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 agenda edits that are listed on the website, the Board Docs website with the agenda for today. In addition to that, there are two others that came up as a result of the committee meetings that happened just before this meeting. We would also like to add 9.a.1, motion to appoint Steve Rittenhouse to the Technology, Policy Review, and Finance Committees to replace A. Godfrey. And under 7.a.5, a motion to dispose of old textbooks currently being housed at the middle school at the recommendation of the CNI Committee. So, with those 12 items, do I have a motion to add those to the agenda?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Who was the first?
Ms. Albright, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board before we vote to add those to the agenda? I get a vote?
Ms. Olson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes.
All right. Mrs. Leoni, absent. Not here. Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes. Mr. Sherrill, not here. Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. So, having just added 12 items to the agenda, does anybody in the audience have any public comment on those 12 items that we just added?
Pressed to oracle. Pressed to oracle, Cross Street, Burgsboro. My question is, so when you slam on these last well agenda items, I mean, I know the last two came from other meetings previous to this one, do you really get to investigate and learn about what you're voting on? Like, really, you, it's slammed on there. Can you get to that quickly? It's a little concerning because it doesn't give, or not give, a mind to research either how our...
Well, when it comes to, like, some of them on the CNI, we just had an entire meeting for a half an hour prior to this meeting. We had, like, three meetings in a row where we talked about why the books are no longer useful, where we tried to get rid of them. The items under 5a, those items, three of them, were already discussed as being things that we were going to add as of the last meeting that we had. They all came out of the Facilities Meeting that happened right before the last meeting, but we didn't have dollar amounts. Now, if some of these dollar amounts, people on board aren't comfortable with them, we can have that discussion and decide to table those. You know, but all of these items that need to be done came from another meeting and was spoken about at length in the committee in the whole. Yeah, no problem. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to consent items, 3a1 through, oh my gosh, 1 through 18. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Okay, hearing none. Let's have a vote.
We need a motion in first.
Oh, yeah. Don't we? We have to do that? Sorry. Can I get a motion for 3a1 through 18? Thank you. And second for Mr. Jarrett? Is that cool? Yeah, yeah. And Ms. Thompson. Pick one. So, now, any comments, questions, concerns on anything under the consent items?
3a1.
Through 18?
Yeah.
I think? Yes. And, okay, can we get a vote?
Ms. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Receivers.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes. And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to personnel. We have 4.a.1 through 3 inclusive, including the agenda edits that we voted on at the beginning. Can I get a motion for those? Mr. Scott, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Jarrett. Any comments, questions, concerns on personnel? And a motion? Can I get a vote?
Ms. Albright.
Out of practice.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Yes, and Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to finance added consent. It's 5.a.8, including the agenda edits. Can I get a motion for those?
Just 1 through 8.
Yeah.
Motion.
And a second? And having said that, either with the things that were already, that were already part of the agenda, or the things that were added, anybody feel like they want more color on those items? Mr. Struble's the chair of the Facilities Committee, but we could ask Dr. Cooper to give some color. But one thing I will say is, I was at that Facilities Meeting, and every single one of those items.
Yeah, we just said so.
Yeah.
I just have a question about number five.
We didn't have a number then, you know, when we had the meeting.
But didn't we have some kind of a contribution or something?
That's the soundboard, and that is not for the, that's not for the auditorium.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And, yeah, and you're speaking of the item under 5a2. That soundboard will be able to be used by the jazz band and the marching band and perhaps even, like, the chorus when they're off-site. But yeah, it's a traveling one.
Got it. I got you.
And this is, as they plan on bringing musical stuff.
Correct. Yeah. So, any questions before we vote? Can I get a vote?
Sure. Ms. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes. And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And, you know, having said that, as Mr. Jarrett brought it up, I did want to thank the music boosters for their donation. You know, they made that donation because the item that we had no longer worked. So, it is going to be nice to have that piece of equipment available for the kids again. Personnel added. 6a1 through 3?
4.
Yeah. No, well, it's...
It's a 4.
The 4 is under 3.
Okay.
Yeah. So, 6a3 inclusive, including edits. Can I get a second? Can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Ms. Bell, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Jarrett. Comments, questions, concerns on personnel added consent? Can I get a vote?
Yeah, just to be clear. So, 6a1 through 4?
Through 3.
3 is 4, both under 3.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Ms. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes. And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes, but I just wanted to say I'm very excited to see Mrs. Albright.
All right. So, under programs, 7.a.1 through 5, as amended, can I get a motion for that?
Make it.
Can I get a second? Second.
Ms. Bell.
Ms. Albright.
Oh.
Comments, questions, concerns on programs added?
Great.
We voted, we decided, the textbooks, they've been looking for a home, there was a more permanent home for a while. So, that was just voted out on in the last, in the last committee, Curriculum and Instruction Committee. So, can we get a vote?
Ms. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Jarrett, sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes. And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. So, can I get a motion for 8.a.1 through 3? Yep. Cool. Yeah.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. First item, under Old Business, at the last meeting, we had our first discussion of the TIF in probably over six months. Is that right? And we realized that some of the folks in the, in the audience, and even some of us up here, had kind of forgotten some of the details of how a TIF works. So, I'm asking, I believe, Mr. Subers to give us some color on that.
Sure. The typical TIF, and TIF is tax and increment finance, and it provides a mechanism whereby typically a local authority works with a developer on a project. And in order to enhance their desire to locate the project within a district or municipality, we provide them a tax incentive. And the way the tax incentive works is that we agree to waive certain future taxes, but the taxes that we are waiving relate to the increase in value of the property based on the project. So, if the project results in an increase in the value of the property, we're willing to waive the taxes on the increase, not the taxes on the base value of the property. And we generally do that on a, it can be done on a sliding scale over whatever period of time is negotiated between the municipality, the Development Authority, and the school district. School districts has the lion's share of the tax income and revenue. In this case, it's approximately 70% versus the municipalities' 30%. And several months ago, they provided us, the Development Authority provided, the district administration, which asked my firm to review a cooperation agreement explaining how this TIF would operate. And the one main comment that we had with revision was they wanted us to guarantee the underlying debt. And we, our recommendation was that the district not guarantee the underlying debt. What our contribution to the project is, is waiving the taxes on the increased value. We're not guaranteeing anything. What we'll say is, if the property value increases, we will waive the taxes, and you can use that income to apply against your debt service. Right now, they appear to be insisting on a guarantee of the underlying debt. And in their Q and A, their, you know, questions and answers that they provided for the board, they estimate your exposure to be approximately $2.8 million. And we're not recommending that. We're recommend, you know, if they want to guarantee, we'll guarantee it up to the amount of those taxes, that tax increase. But we're not going to guarantee it out of monies that we already have or entitled to. We're not going to guarantee it out of the taxes on the property at its existing value level. And we're not going to guarantee it out of our general, well, we're recommending that you not guarantee it out of your general fund. So, we're recommending that, to the extent they want to guarantee, we will guarantee it out of this future money from the enhanced value of the property with that said. We're not going to, we're not going to guarantee the underlying debt.
But that's the purpose of the TIF, right? To give them the money that's the difference between the tax?
The TIF is to defer the tax, the increased tax rate.
Right.
So that they can use that money to...
Offset their debt.
Yeah, to pay their debt service.
Right. So, why would we guarantee 2.8 million?
Well, there's, you know, and the issue is if something goes wrong with the project. And they, and they don't realize that enhanced value, so there's no credit for us to give that. They want us to just...
That's their gambling, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, they want to guarantee the fact that if, let's say, of the 340 homes that are proposed for that development.
Right now, we sell half of them.
Let's say they sell 100 of them.
Right.
And...
Or subsidize the rest.
Correct. That's what they're saying. If a project shuts down, they're asking for a guarantee of the district to cover 70% of the remaining cost of that, whatever the difference is between what we accessed for that 100 homes and what we would have accessed for the 340.
30. So, it changed, right?
That's, that's not...
That wasn't what, that wasn't what we originally...
That wasn't what we were originally discussing. So, so, and there's, so, they're saying there's no contractor signature without us making that change.
They are asking for that change. They're asking us to reinsert a guarantee. And we're not recommending it. And to the, we could basically say the same thing that we said before, is that we guarantee it up to the extra dollars that we realize from the enhanced property value, but nothing more.
So, right now, you're informing us of where we are. That's council's recommendation. We don't have to have a vote on what to do at this point, do we?
Give me direction on whether, how you want me to respond to them regarding your request for a guarantee.
Okay. So, let, um... So, the way it's written here, we're not, you just want, you just want our direction?
Yeah, direction.
I mean, is the consensus that we're looking to move forward with it as it was presented to us a year ago, not with, not with that guarantee?
Not with that guarantee?
Yeah. That's the consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I need.
Okay.
Did this change in the last two weeks?
I don't think that they, that might have been, they didn't say anything about that last, last time we were here. No. So, so... And at this point, if that is a nonstarter, we are, we have zero, we have zero financial, you know, we have, we have nothing but the lost time of the people that attended the meetings, you know, you know, from the board and from the school district. So, if that's a nonstarter for them, yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, there's no, we're responsible for the school district's money, and that's not, that's not, that's not a fiduciary responsible act.
I know that some people were here the other day, but it's kind of a...
That wasn't what they said.
They didn't bring that up when they were there.
So, so my, that's...
I think it was a question about how we were voting and taxes and all that. I mean, I don't think anybody on here is voting for that.
Yeah, I agree with council. Okay. So, can, so, thank you. So, can I have an amended, can I have an amended motion from, to just vote on Old Business A, 8a1 and 2, from the two people who, can you just, can you give me the names?
I think, I mean, you approved it 1 through 3. 1 was only listed as a discussion.
As a discussion. Okay, we're fine. Then leave it the way it is. Any other, any further discussion before we vote?
I think you did vote 7o on that, didn't you?
On 1, 2, 3?
Yeah.
We didn't vote yet?
Okay, okay.
I think we were listening to you.
And in that instance, you would only be voting on 2 and 3.
Okay. Can we amend that? Can you give me the names of the people who first and seconded the 8?
Oh, okay. It's right, oh yeah. So, Ms. Albright and Mrs. Bell.
Would you be okay with amending your motion to just have 2 and 3?
Yeah, I'm not doing, no.
And Ms. Bell?
Check out 1 and 1.
All right. So, just voting on 2 and 3?
Ms. Albright.
Can we get a vote?
Do you want to know what I really think?
No.
We're good.
All right, ready to vote? Ms. Albright.
I'm only voting on 2 and 3, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Bell.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. Mr. Jarrett.
Don't slip anything in there.
Nope, didn't do that. Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mrs., oh my God, not a good night. Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes.
And Mr. Scott, yes. And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And under New Business, we just have one amended item, 9a1. Can I get a motion for that? I'll make a motion. Can I get a second? A second. And this is just to have Mr. Rittenhouse replace Ms. Godfrey on her three committees. I had a discussion before the meeting with Mr. Rittenhouse, and if he's amendable, we will be doing a reorg in December. And so, everybody had a chance to join new meetings at that time. So, if we vote yes on this, we'll just leave it, leave the appointments the way they are for everybody across the board. Any comments, questions, concerns before we vote? Can I get a vote?
Ms. Albright.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
I have to vote.
Yes. Yeah, you get to vote.
Yes.
You're voting against yourself. Mr. Scott, yes. And Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. Presentation by the public on issues.
Jim DeCray, Amity Township. Consistency is the key to success. Parenting, sports, education, and business being consistent is essential to success. Over the past few years, we have seen very inconsistent messaging and policies regarding handling of illnesses, especially COVID-19. We went from people not to wear masks, to wear one mask, then two. They quarantined healthy people and told sick people to not go to the doctor. We kept our children from the least susceptible home and gave them less than adequate education. When the kids were able to come back, they were forced to wear masks that we now know were ineffective and were only in school every other day. If a student was in the same room as someone who was suspected of having been in contact with someone with COVID but showed no symptoms, they were forced to stay home until they tested negative and missed a week or more of in-person education, even if they never showed any symptoms. Things have shifted in a complete, a complete other way. Today, my son was not feeling well in school. He felt miserable and had a sore throat. He went to the nurse. She had him gargle saltwater and then sent him back to class. I asked, I called and I asked why she did not send him home, or at least call myself or his mother. And she stated that he did not have any symptoms that qualified to be sent home. I was instructed to go onto Infinite Campus and schedule an early release for him. I did, and he was able to go home and rest. This is completely opposite to the way things have been handled in the last few years. While I do not want to go back to the draconian measures we have seen over the last few years, some common sense should apply. You have a student that is complaining of feeling ill but is told to stay in class. The same child a year ago was forced to stay home because he was in the same lunch with someone who suspected positive for COVID, even though my son never showed any symptom. What are we going to actually start following science and common sense? I do not understand why, if my child stated he is not feeling well, that his parents were not called to see what we wanted to do. I see this becoming a recurring theme across our country and now at Daniel River. The school administrators are taking over parent's rights in regards to children's health and education. We have been here for the last year discussing asking vaccinations for regular racial problems. We will continue to voice our opinion on these issues, and we should be the determining voice in what happens in our child's lives. A month or two ago, a questionnaire was sent out about the security in our school district. Parents responded and reacted in on majority opinion. With all the communications we've sent out to the district, why can't we have more questionnaires to find out what the majority want? more questionnaires to find out what the majority want? Were teacher children the fundamental skills they need compared to the rest of their parents?
Thank you. Thank you.
This has an attachment, only does not have an attachment. This is one for everybody. This is covered for everybody.
Okay.
And there's another packet for everybody.
My name is Sarah DeCray. I'm here to talk about curricular theory, social learning again. I didn't know if you knew this, but in New Jersey, local New Jersey Fox News station, he has comments and he informed viewers that there was new statewide second education center in New Jersey, and teachers stated the youngest 13-year-old lacking sex, pregnancy options, and school districts that fails to comply face this disciplinary action during the last time. The standards were adopted by the New Jersey Board of Education in June of 2020, and schools are required to implement that in the beginning of the summer. Amid concerns from parents and school districts, the state, the State Department of Education has warned the schools who failed to implement new standards may face this. The state standard describes what students will learn by each grade level, and it is up to the districts to design curricular edutainment standards. I went off to the PA Education website, and I did see things similar, but I'm watching. I attached. What the parents in New Jersey handed out to their fellow parents in the district, it basically says, you know, I can't even read some of these things, so just sort of discuss it, but it's about masturbation and all kinds of things that should not be taught in K-5, but that's what they want to do. This is a state that's right next to it in Pennsylvania. Then in Ohio, this is really disturbing. That's the attachment I gave you. I'm not even going to verbalize some of this, any of this stuff that's behind here. It's a 10-page, this is the National Teachers Union. They have a caucus, an LGBTQ+ caucus that's created, a website, and a badge for public belief that promotes non-binary identities on a guide to how queer sex and the idea of transgendering can be a part of that. For example, the NEA has been providing stamps in Hiller County School District in Ohio with QR code embedded badges that point to a website. I've included it. One of these links is a teen health source, Queering Sexual Education. That's what's attached here. Uh, I can't even, it's disgusting. This is not a fringe or organization. The NEA is the largest teachers union in the country. They represent 3 million school teachers. This is in Ohio, Yalish Park, Pennsylvania. We've been coming here and talking about this for months. This is what we're worrying about. We are looking for a commitment from the school board that something like this will not be implemented in our district, and if there's any table for discussion or vote, please advise the parents. And there should be an opt-out. It's not fair. This is not school business to teach us about. This is private stuff that should be taught by parents. No wonder this is teachers' work, because if I was a teacher, I wouldn't want to teach this.
My mic was turned off. Thank you. I went over some of these. I just have a couple of them to talk about.
Um, we do on the website.
Okay.
I just want to know if we're seeing savings with the bus company? And is there a place for the buses to go or is there community events? Because the middle school, they're all parked there in heaven at night, coming up on six or seven. And it's the fall festival, whatever, it's usually a big event, the parking. And are they, like, the bus company paying us just for the buses there? Is that part of the contract?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, I got some answers earlier, so. And I hear, I heard that a sixth-grade teacher hiring aides and, um, the class sizes are up. And do we replace a sixth-grade teacher yet? And two psychologists are leaving, and we have school doctor. This is how, this helps you in October. And. That's it. I have my name and questions. I'll leave those to.
Thank you.
Jimmy Fallon, Amity Township. I'm still a little upset about last week's decision about the, uh, what the board, uh, recommendation I think by Chicago should have been on. Reese Bane is, you know, her attendance at school board sort of dedication. I know school members mentioned that they were in the same position before while sitting there, and, uh, she had more, uh, board meetings, I guess, and it was a matter of at least ten in the community, takes into play, uh, children coming through the, you know, school district has into play. But yeah, I just wanted to bring up the fact that, you know, that was not a good thing to do, to bring somebody else into the mix, you know, so we'll show dedication becoming obvious. Another reason, another thing I want to bring up is that, does anybody know that they are not saying the pledge of allegiance in the middle school?
Yeah.
But yeah, they're not saying the pledge of allegiance in the middle school. My daughters, they're just telling me that they have not said the pledge of allegiance in all of us this year. And of course, I know, you know, it's that have students in, this is not our school, what do you call it? And in high school, both high school and this is not our school, I was saying the pledge of allegiance.
The high school is or isn't?
Is.
It is.
The high school is, and so is the world kids. But I was wondering why that they aren't saying the pledge of allegiance in school. The reason I ask my kids about is, is I heard someone is trying, not this state, in the other state, trying to ban school if you say the pledge of allegiance. So that's why I asked my children. And they told me that no, they're not saying that they bring home school losses, issues of school losses, which I mean is totally BS, how you shouldn't talk about the day, you know? Someone said, well, just a community, you know, you wake up in the morning, you brush your teeth, you go to bed, your day is about the pledge of allegiance in school. The other issue is two of my chef, three, two of my children are telling me that they are watching CNN in school. It's kind of their schooling. Now, my issue is, is obviously it should be showing, but nowadays there should be news being shown in school, because nowadays you've got the right side and the left side of news, excuse me, and I just avoid showing news, things like that being biased, especially with the cases going on with the country this year. So my kids told me that they're watching CNN, and, you know, my brothers knows about how we feel about, you know, that sort of stuff. My, my wife, and she brought up their teachers, but what I understand is that they're not showing that CNN is in the classroom. Well, that's why I'm saying, why would teachers have to wait to, to try to let children see classes? I, thank you.
Hello, Bob. I'm Bob Markle, uh, First Colonel. By getting, I learned from my eighth grader that any middle school does not recite the pledge of allegiance even more at school, at the middle school. He also said there are not, not even American flags in even the classrooms except for social shirts. Renta Feeny statute, section 7 dash 771, subsection C1, states, "All supervising officers and teachers in charge of public, private, or public schools shall cause the flag of the United States of America to dislave in every classroom during hours each day, school day, and shall provide for the presentation of the pledge of allegiance or the national act at the beginning of the school day." Students may recite the pledge of allegiance, and they refrain from saluting the flag on the basis of religious conviction or personal belief. Supervising officer of a school district, school subject, of the requirements of the subsections shall provide written notification to the parents or guardian of the student inclined to recite pledge of allegiance or who refrains from saluting the flag. Progressive groups in, across the country, like the American Humanist Association, have been attempting to remove pledge of allegiance from schools for years. Quite sadly, these same organizations are pushing social justice and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Can you please tell me why, when and why the pledge of allegiance has been removed from middle school? Is this part of diversity, equity, inclusion program in action? Is this part of curriculum theory in practice?
Anyone else?
Do you have a question?
No, I, I sort of have a comment, and then I have a comment on this, but.
No, I.
Are we talking about, like, one class, or we?
No, I just asked my son, and he says they don't do it.
Okay, so I'm sure that's something that we can fix, right?
Well, no, I didn't know about it to know to fix it.
No, I was just saying, very smart of you, you know. But I wanted, I, I do want to say something before you.
You're picking it out, you're losing.
To be clear, and say so. I wanted to say something to you that the last meeting, I'm only speaking for myself. I can't speak for anybody else. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you coming to every meeting. Julia, Beverly, and myself, I, there's a couple others that aren't here anymore, but we come to all the meetings, and it's really appreciated. I, I, I mean that, and I'm sorry you didn't get voted in, perhaps maybe another time, but it's appreciated. I just want you to know in form of these from me, and I, I know I can probably speak on behalf of a couple people here. So thank you for being here. It's no, it's, and it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Dr. Markle, Paul Street, First Colonel. Do you educate yourselves on the line items on the agenda that affect our children? Can you ever answer questions honestly with transparency? Do you speak up when something doesn't jive and not just sit there, squint in your chair on your phone while making ugly faces at community members during public time? Can you ever make your own decisions and vote, and vote on your own, not told how to vote? Do you investigate topics or situations presented to you from public comments like damage to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and SCLs having on our children? Do you even care for other federal funds the school receives lying here from ever doing the right thing? Attending school board meetings from this year, we've seen how this is working. A small group of bad voices who think they know everything, who want to tell us what is best for our children while ignoring the parents' voices of prison. The only good thing that came out of the bus situation is that it got butts off the seats, or butts in the seats. The community got to see and experience firsthand how people are treated who lack transparency and how something is very wrong with this administration and school board. The community hit the precipice. Only at the precipice will people find the will change to break the system of control. From Donald J. Trump, what imprint will you leave in the stands of history? What would future Americans say we did in our brief time right here on earth? Did we take risks? Did we dare to defy expectations? Did we challenge accepted wisdom and take on and establish systems? I know that each of you will be a warrior for the truth or our country and for your family. I know that each of you will do what is right, not what is the easy way, and that you will be true to yourself, your country, and your beliefs. Remember this, enough you weren't doing ever came easy. Following your convictions means you must be willing to face criticisms from those who lack courage or their guts in the stamina, stamina to take it and to do it. It's called the road less traveled. It is time for citizens of this community to hold people accountable for the bad decisions that people make on behalf of our children. Take the road less traveled and leave with imprint in the stands of history. It's time for parents united. And I promise that I work to replace those whose arms dropped in 2023, including the head of the snake. And then, and then we can go after the administration.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for reminding me that the devil's on the fence. God says he despises the form, reform is, is writing the fence, and God says we scream out, either be hot or cold. It's not judgment, but a shared view and opportunity to reflect on a pen. Second till before, three before, the time will come when people will not put up with self doctrine, instead see their own desires. They will gather around them a great number of teachers and say what their itching ears want to hear. They will turn their ears away from truth and turn aside to myths. I have seen a persistent of an ideology be pushed on our peers despite the parents' wishes all last year in summer. This year, my kids were told they will be watching CNN during homeroom laser learning time. One of my daughter's teacher said during BLT laser learning time, they will be learning SCL. Her questions to the kids were, when you see me, what do you see? It's okay, you can say I'm black. Same question, Law Flowers asked one of the students in the same question I heard Cooper say to Russ, when Russ questioned the appropriateness of the question, you're going to hang this, hang him on this one question? Um, yeah, we are. Because it seems to be a popular question. When the teacher proceeded to talk to me about being black and slavery, she pulled my daughter aside and asked if she was uncomfortable with the conversation. My daughter is an Afro-Latina. Why she pinpointed my child and another kid of color in class is beyond me. This is a product of a DDID program, which we have had numerous conversations about. My daughter now sees herself different from her own sisters, while before she didn't see a difference. How do I, as a mom, fix that? How do I fix that? You say it's a positive program. Meanwhile, I have to pick up the shattered pieces of her heart. No, there's nothing wrong with her Afro. There's nothing wrong with her tan skin. There's something wrong with that. She's not different from the other kids. I'm not going to be here to reach what we've been asking you all to consider for over a year, because you guys are getting the message. You need to start listening to us. On a separate agenda, with the special finances, has anybody ever considered an actual crossing guard over at the intermediate center? Thanks to this, so the busing system, I actually spoke with another, uh, resident over there in the development under the Roselet Drive, and he is appalled with how that road, or that intersection is being conducted. You have two teachers walking around with stop signs that walk into the building right at 8:30 a.m. Now, I'm pretty sure drop off is until 8:40. Now, you're also, this is also in.
Now, you're also, this is also in a development with sidewalks, which means this is a walking location. Why is there not better crossing, the actual crossing guard to be considered in the finances? But we can make up fancy, different positions within the district. Dr. Cooper, being from Boyertown, you should know that there were plenty of crossing guards at almost every single intersection around the schools. I also want to know, what kind of person have you turned into? Okay? I remember you being the principal, being a hard ass, flat out. I got fined, you had my cell phone taken away during study call, a couple times, actually. But now we're also pushing these iPads more and more. Yeah, I know about the insurance for these iPads being due near speed, but where was the authorization to give my kids these iPads? To push these hidden lessons that us parents can't see? Now, my daughter's iPad in certain sections is all blocked after I brought things up last year. So that's pretty interesting. We need to get this figured out. And thanks to these iPads, we have these flexible learning days. But yet, the calendar shows that June, Monday, June 5th to Friday, June 9th is snow makeup dates. Where did those come from? I thought they were gone.
I see none. Can I ask you to adjourn? A second?
A second.
Okay, there is no executive session tonight, so have a good night, everyone. We're adjourned.